We'll get you.
Every other day covered almost.
We'll get Sacks.
Yeah.
All right, we're good.
Football season, I can't wait.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we have a roll call?
Nope, um, um.
The, uh, has this been a meeting been advertised according to the sunshine laws?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Candell, Mr. Allegra, Mr. Bolton, Mr. Elmeyer, Ms. Larmont, Mr. Muller, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Velosin, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai, we have a quorum.
Um, no, there is no memorialization of, uh, resolutions. Can I have a no acceptance of the minutes? No communication. Uh, we have one subject, uh, one thing before the C- CPMD Journey Mill Road major preliminary final site plan for block fifty-eight-nine and block fifty-eight point, point two oh-one. Um, will not be here tonight. So if anybody's here for the cold storage warehouse, we're not going to hear that. You are gonna hear the Gonzalez Minor, uh, subdivision, one-one-two, two-all, Boardentown Avenue, Saro. Mr. Sax, your pleasure.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, board professionals. Uh, Lawrence Sax, on behalf of the applicant, uh, Eric Gonzalez. Uh, this property is located at eleven-twenty Boardentown Avenue, uh, block four-thirty-nine-point-oh-one, lot one. Uh, the property is located in your R-ten zone. Uh, it's a little bit shy of an acre, uh, presently. And we are before you this evening, we're seeking a minor subdivision, uh, to create a new lot so that we can construct a single-family house on the new lot. Uh, if the board, uh, grants a subdivision, there'll be obviously the existing house on one lot and then, uh, the, uh, the new house on the other lot. Uh, we're also seeking to construct a twelve-hundred-square-foot, uh, forty-by-thirty, uh, garage, uh, or accessory structure. Um, the purpose of which, by the way, is to house, uh, classic, uh, cars and motorcycles, which are owned by my client, uh, as well as to give him a, uh, a, an area where, and he can testify to this, we'll, we'll do that if it's, uh, if he'd like, Mr. Chairman. Um, he also builds HO-gauge small trains, uh, you know, as a hobby. And, uh, he, he wants to be able to do that in this accessory structure as well. Um, so, uh, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, two witnesses, I have two witnesses. I have Mr. Robert Key, uh, who is our professional engineer and professional planner. And again, I also have Mr. Gonzalez here who can answer any questions, uh, regarding, uh, the structure that's being proposed, uh, for the garage. So, um, if I can have Mr. Key sworn in.
Hi, do you, uh, raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you want to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
And could you just, uh, state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Robert Key, K-E-E.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Key, if you can give the board the benefit of your educational background and professional qualifications.
Well, many, many years ago, I graduated college. Uh, I became a licensed professional engineer, a licensed professional planner, and a licensed professional land surveyor. Um, the early seventies, I used to sit right with that gentleman, seven years I sat there. So I've been around planning boards, zoning boards, municipalities, and key engineering I established in nineteen-seventy-seven. So I've been around the state a lot.
Okay. And Mr. Key, obviously, you've testified before numerous planning boards and zoning boards, both as an engineer, as a planner. You're also municipal engineer and planner. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
Mr. Chairman, make the motion, accept his credentials.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Key, I know you've got some exhibits, um, so why don't we first go through, uh, the proposed subdivision plan, uh, and that is, Joe, I don't know if we need to mark that, it's part of your submission.
If that's what the plan that was submitted to the board, we don't need to mark it as exhibit. Just gotta, just identify what you're referring to, please.
Okay.
Everything on this board, uh, is part of the application itself, the entire application. We prepared an additional one so I could describe the property, and in case anybody's not familiar with the particular piece of property, uh, show you what the neighborhood, uh, is, uh, is like, uh, the property itself, where it is and stuff. So that's the only additional, uh-
Okay.
Presentation I have to-
All right, when you, when you get to that, we'll mark it as an exhibit, and in the meantime, just let us know which page you're looking at so that for the record, it's clear what we're, um, uh, what, what you're presenting to the board.
Uh, right now, I'm on sheet two of, uh, eight, which is the, uh, actual minor subdivision plot itself. Um, to or north, Boardentown Avenue, uh, the property faces Boardentown, uh, Avenue. Uh, and the lot configuration, uh, is not perpendicular to the actual right-of-way, which makes it a difficult piece of property more than straight to accommodate most of, uh, construction that, uh, is, uh, can be proposed. Presently, uh, there's a single, uh, story-and-a-half single dwelling, uh, on the property. Uh, it meets all zoning requirements at the present time. Uh, there's a shed out in the back and a concrete driveway coming to the concrete, uh, parking areas behind the house itself. Uh, the area that we're proposing to subdivide is at present, uh, vacant land with the exception of, uh, where the driveway, uh, enters and exits, uh, Boardentown, uh, Avenue, or Turnpike, I should say. Uh, we're proposing a similar, um, layout for subdivision that exists right on the adjacent piece of property. Uh, right over here. Um, they, they both had large acreage, almost an, almost an acre of property itself. Uh, we're limited to, uh, a hundred and thirty-eight feet of, uh, actual frontage along, uh, Boardentown. And, uh, the houses are all oriented so that they are perpendicular off of the Boardentown Avenue, Turnpike. Uh, the proposed new building will be built within the envelope, building envelope. Uh, no, uh, variances are, uh, required, uh, on the, uh, the new building construction. We're asking for a variance on lot width and frontage for both, uh, lots. Uh, we divided it exactly in half of the actual frontage that's, uh, on the property at the present time. In doing so, we're going to create an easement where the existing, uh, driveway, uh, enters the property. Our proposed construction- Um, with sheet three now of, uh, the, uh, my, uh, presentation. The building is gonna be facing, uh, perpendicular to, uh, Boardentown. Again, we're putting in, uh, a, a brand-new driveway which meets all codes requirements. No building setback requirements are, are necessary. Uh, on the property itself, at the present time, there's a water main that runs along this, uh, the, uh, westerly sideline. Uh, and no encroachments on there except for the little driveway here, but it's permitted within the easement. The proposed construction, uh, is a, uh, two-story, single-family dwelling. And I think that covers it.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Key, in addition, we're gonna, we're proposing to build a twelve-hundred-square-foot accessory structure. If you can indicate to the board where that's located on the property.
Okay. Uh, again, this is the, the rear end of the, uh, existing property. Uh, the shed is here, uh, and the new garage is gonna be there.
Okay. And that's a, that's a twelve-hundred-square-foot property. It's approximately twenty-five feet in height?
Right.
Okay.
It's, uh, thirty by forty in, in actual dimensions.
Thirty by forty. Okay. Um, all right. And, uh, in terms of the variances that, that are required in connection with this application. Um, so we, we, we don't need a variance for lot area. In fact-
Definitely not, no.
Right. One of the lots, lot, proposed lot one-oh-one is gonna be ten thousand thirty-eight square feet. And proposed lot one-oh-two is gonna be thirty thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-four square feet. You indicated we need a variance for minimum lot width, uh, of s- one-hundred feet required, but sixty-nine feet proposed.
Right.
I know you're gonna cover that in your planning testimony. Um, and we also need variances for accessory structure size. I know, uh, the zone requires a maximum of a hundred and fifty square feet for an accessory structure, which really is like a shed, but we're proposing twelve-hundred square feet.
That's correct.
And these are gonna be used to score classic cars and, uh, and to facilitate Mr. Gonzalez to do his hobby. And as well, uh, the maximum height of an accessory structure in this zone is fifteen feet. We're proposing twenty-five feet.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Let's, uh, let's go over your planning analysis, um, unless there's any questions about-
Anyone have any questions so far?
Okay.
All right.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Key, now you can put on your planner's hat. And, um, I know you did some analysis of this particular R-ten, uh, neighborhood. And if you could give the board the benefit of your planning analysis.
Uh, yes, I tried to lay it out. Uh, we were there, we took-
And let, let's mark this, uh, A-one, um, or- Mark it as A-one with today's date.
And if, uh, absolutely, and if you don't mind just identifying what's on the exhibit and if there's photos, who took the photos and what they're, what they're of, just for the, for the record, please.
Uh, the photos were recently taken by my office, my office staff, uh, and it consists of seven photographs in and around the, uh, proposed, uh, or the site for the subdivision. I have a section of the zoning map to identify where the zones are in relationship to, uh, and a blow-up that shows the exact direction of each of the photographs that I have on the board.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Um, again, to describe the property, this is part of a, a very large R-ten zone, uh, in, uh, in Saro. Uh, but the only exception is this little outburst of the zone, uh, on the southern side of Boardentown Avenue. Aside from that, we're surrounded by B-three zone and the R-five zone, which is the fifty-by-a-hundred lots. And it's ninety percent developed over there, uh, with very small lot in comparison to the R-ten. The R-ten, uh, the lot sizes that are in here now, uh, are, it's a mixture within the lot, uh, the block itself. I'll, I'll describe in just a couple of minutes. Photograph one is from, uh, the intersection and-
You know what, could we, maybe let's orient this.
Sure. I understand. Photograph one, uh, this is me. And we're looking from the northwest direction to the property itself. This would be the property backing through here, and this is part of the R-fifty zone, a couple of houses that exist right along Boardentown. Number two is taking just a little bit closer, so we're just seeing our particular piece of property. This is the house that's, uh, presently on the property. This is the vacant area. This is the last lot in the R-fifty zone. Three is directly across the street from the property itself. This is the existing structure that's on the lot. This is the driveway we were just talking about. And this is the vacant portion of the property where the subdivision and the new house is proposed to go. Number four goes to the next one, which is a similar situation. They had a little bit larger lot than we have here, but they had the same difficulties of the lot width and what have you to create their new lot. And what we're proposing is identical to the, the design and layout as exists presently on, uh, lot two and two-point-oh-one. Okay? Lot number five takes you from the other side, and you're looking back at it. That's the house that's on the property here. This is the new house that was built on that property. And this is the old one with the big piece of property behind it. This takes it so you can see the projection and what physically exists, uh, along Boardentown Avenue. Uh, number six is over on, uh, Berlou, the, uh, the corner. There's an existing house, and I've marked it in, uh, orange to identify it. It's not, uh, it's a single-family house, but I believe there's a real estate office. So it's, uh, built on a variance, I would assume, or it's operating on a variance, I would assume, because it's not strictly a residential lot. And right alongside that, this is the lot I was just talking about, the trailer. And these other four lots over here are the ones right along here. And all of those lots are undersized in accordance with the R-ten zone. There's seventy-five by a hundred lots. So my overall presentation was doing that, and then I wanted to show you on here, exactly, you've got three little parcels, uh, two parcels, I should say. The last big lot, it's undeveloped. And this lot over in here, which conformed to your R-ten zone, and this entire block within the zone, this is the R-fifty zone. We have what we're proposing. That one has variances. All of these have variances. And that one is very close in lot area, but, uh, the main reason is it's not a, uh, permitted use, uh, they have, of course, uh, perfection wasn't, uh, allowed in that zone.
All right. So, um, yeah, so let me, you know, let me move this all.
Sure.
All right. All right. So if we're looking, and thank you for going through the photographs, but let's focus on this section of the R-ten zone, which is on the south side of Boardentown Avenue. That's the outlier of the R-ten zone. And then this partic- this particular exhibit, uh, where you marked up the tax map. So the one in, the one in, uh, pink is, um-
Our site.
Is, is, is our site. The one that's next to it, which is number four, is a similar lot, which either probably received a variance at some time, which is almost identical to what we're proposing here, where they have the larger lot and a slightly smaller lot, uh, but with the same type of configuration. Um, lot fi- the, the one that's marked as number five is a vacant lot?
Uh, that's three.
Yes. Okay. Lot, lot three. I'm just looking at your numbers. Okay. Yeah, okay. And then the lots that are fronting on Berlou, uh, which back up to lot three, which is the vacant lot. All of those have undersized lot widths in accordance with the R-ten zone, with the exception of one.
Twenty.
Okay. So the majority of them, so if there are one, two, three, four, five, six lots there, five out of six are non-conforming.
Yes.
Okay.
Only one is.
And they all have some, and they're all roughly seventy, seventy-five feet in frontage.
If, the intent when they got this subdivision was to have a seventy-five by a hun- hundred-and-ten-foot feet lot.
And we're proposing sixty-nine feet, uh, for both of these lots.
Yes.
All right. Now, you also testified that the R-five zone is immediately adjacent to our, uh, our zone.
This is the zone boundary line. This is R-five, and this is us, which is R-ten.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman or Mrs. Sedillo, I have another exhibit, which is of the R-five zone. I'll mark that as A-two, and I just wanna pass that out to the board. Um, and I'll give a copy also to Mr. Key. Okay. So, so A-two, which I passed out to the board, and you have Mr. Key, that's basically the tax map for that R-five zone. Those lots are all roughly, uh, fifty-five, fifty-seven feet in width. Is that correct?
Oh, well, there's some that are even smaller than that.
And even smaller than that. And that is immediately adjacent to this little outlier of an R-ten zone.
Further on down the street within this five, R-five zone.
Okay. All right. So based upon your analysis of the surrounding neighborhood, including the R-five zone and the outlier R-ten zone where we're located, um, is it your testimony that what we're proposing is consistent and compatible with the development pattern in that, in those two zones?
Yes, I don't know how that particular area got left into an R-ten zone.
Right.
It was just a separate part of the massive, this, this is a huge R-ten zone.
Okay.
Been developed, you can see, uh, various lots and stuff. Uh, and they were left with unusually large lots for even the R-ten zone with the amount of frontage. Uh, and there's been subdivision or variance, uh, planning board actions taken on that property over the years. It's, it's obvious, most of the buildings are there.
And in fact, the, so you're, so the lot right next door to us has basically the same configuration that we're proposing. Identical, okay.
A little bit different, some of the, the men, the lot dimensions.
Okay. All right. And let's talk briefly about the accessory structure that's being built. It's obviously not a shed. It's going to be housing, uh, classic cars, motorcycles owned by Mr. Gonzalez. Um, in your professional opinion, is the size of that garage, uh, uh, for the use that's being proposed, uh, consistent with the type of structure that we're building?
Well, yes, it's, it's, it's a personal, uh, design and stuff. Uh, my client has, uh, not strange hobbies, but unusual as far as the general public goes and stuff. Uh, and, uh, the type of, uh, use he's gonna be putting in there is above and beyond what would normally fit-
Into a shed.
Uh, for hobbies or something in a shed, or even a large, uh, house. It's there.
Okay.
So, uh, yes, it is unusual, but at least it's-
Okay.
It, it's not in violation to the intent and purpose. It's, uh, just a, uh, not a garage. It's a structure for hobbies.
Right. Okay. Um, and, and Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just give you some stipulations that we would agree to, because I-
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask you about it.
I sat here long enough to know. So we will agree that there'll be no commercial activity, uh, ongoing in that garage. We will agree that it will not be used as a personal residence. It will only be for the storage of his classic cars, motorcycles, and for him building these little miniature trains that he, that he has a hobby. So we'll, we'll stipulate to those conditions. Okay. Um, all right. Uh, Mr. Key, if you want, and Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can go over Mr. Cornell's report and Mr. Fowler's report.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. All right. So, uh, Mr. Key, I think you have a copy of Mr. Cornell's report.
Chairman, I have one question, question. Mr. Um, um, do we have, do you have any architecturals to this grudge?
We do. Um, I think they're on the other side of this particular exhibit. Yeah.
Are they on the, uh?
No, ask them out.
Okay. You said it's twenty-five feet high?
It's twenty-five.
Is it gonna be second, it's gonna be two stories to it? Oh, okay.
Maybe we'll mark this one as eight-three. Sorry, I thought you all had.
No.
All right. All right. Mr. Key, let's, that, that, that's the house, right?
That's the house. And that's the house.
That's the house, all right. What about the accessory structure? So that is she, uh, let me mark this. Okay. So, uh, just really to just take this through, and I know Mr. Velosin had it, but, uh, the height of this is twenty-five feet, um-
Yes. From, that's to the actual peak from ground level.
It's got the two garage doors.
And there's gonna be some kind of a stair, I, I see there? A sta- okay.
That's the stair to the mezzanine.
Okay.
This is the first floor plan. You would go up the stairs up here into the-
Gotcha. Okay.
He calls it a finished attic on the architectural planes. And I don't, I don't normally describe architectural planes. Uh, as a matter of fact, I didn't look at them.
It's gonna be an open mezzanine to look down?
I have no idea. I doubt it.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I didn't hear that. You said you didn't get into the-
I think, Eric, come on up. I'm gonna have to have you sworn in. Okay.
Before you, uh, start speaking, um, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're, you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you please just state and spell your name for the record?
Eric Gonzalez, uh, Eric, E-R-I-K, Gonzalez, G-O-N, Z-A-L-E-Z.
All right. Well, Mr. Gonzalez, while I have you up here, I know you can provide affirmative testimony now. Uh, at the outset of the meeting, I indicated you're gonna use this garage, uh, to store some classic cars and motorcycles that you have.
Yes.
And I assume that's gonna be obviously on the ground level.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And what's the intent for the use of the second level?
So when I went to my architect, I asked him what the maximum height was. He told me twenty-five. So I didn't, I didn't know, I mean, right now, I'm realizing that it's a variance to go twenty-five. I, what you guys said, it's fifteen. So I said, can we put a mezzanine? The, the trains he spoke about, they're actually HO cars. They're little cars. And, and I have some tracks in my basement of my home, which my wife is looking to kick me out with. You know, I play, I do it with the kids. So when he told me I can do twenty-five, I said, can we do a mezzanine? And I figure I'll put the tracks there, and I can set up all that stuff for me and the kids to do, to do the stuff there. And that's basically it. So as far as open, it's not open to the bottom. It can be if you need it to be.
Wall there. Okay.
Basically just to go up and have a spot. You know, it's not, I don't think it's gonna be a full-height ceiling. But I'm not that tall, and my kid's shorter than me, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. Key, if you want, we can go over Mr. Cornell's report, and then we'll do Mr. Fowler's. All right. So if I turn to page, uh, well, I'm gonna go to the technical engineering review. Paragraph one states, uh, that we'll have to get Middlesex County Planning Board approval. Certainly will comply with that.
Yes.
Uh, same thing, paragraph two, any road opening permits. Uh, paragraph three, Mr. Cornell suggesting that we provide a turnaround-type driveway. I, I, obviously, we have enough area to do this, is that correct?
Yes, we do, number one. And number two, uh, I think the county is also gonna require that. So, uh, it was just an oversight on our part, uh, when we prepared it, uh, uh, no. So we'll, we'll, we'll revise the plan accordingly.
Okay. Number four talks about, uh, the, adding details about water service.
Yes.
That's fine. Uh, number five, uh, deals with the, uh, the existing driveway, uh, required to be set back five feet. Obviously, we're not changing that, um, and we'd be seeking a waiver. And in your professional opinion, is there any issue with the board granting this particular waiver?
No, uh, that's the, going back to, uh, our site plan itself. That's why I described the existing concrete driveway and why it gets in that configuration.
Okay.
This is the existing house, and it's perpendicular to the roadway as I described before, and the driveway comes out perpendicular. Uh, and there's no other way of moving that driveway. So we're, we're putting it within the, uh, an easement area there. The new driveway, which is gonna be on this, this side of the, the property we just talked about, is gonna be, uh, in front of the garage area. And we're gonna be putting the, uh, the K on it or, uh, the backup for that new driveway.
All right. Uh, number six, uh, requires us to provide meet and bounds description. We'll comply with that.
Yes.
Uh, number seven, uh, we just need to make a change on the plans. Labeling, we'll do that. Same thing with number eight. Uh, number nine, we'll provide street trees if required by ordinance. Number nine, we'll provide street trees if required by ordinance.
Correct? Correct, we just didn't show them on the plan.
All right, number 10, I think we, we've given testimony as to that. Number 11, I think we've given testimony as to that as well. Number 12, the need for a bathroom. Obviously, I think that's more of an accommodation to Mr. Gonzalez, is that correct?
I'm, I'm assuming, yeah. I'm not an expert of where, when.
And the fact that we're agreeing not to use this for any residential occupancy and not to use it for any commercial purposes, we know that it's limited to just his particular use.
Yes.
Okay, so we'd like to keep the bathroom there if we can, Mr. Chairman. Number 13. Yes, we'll revise the zoning table. 14 will comply with, 15 are just requirements of the map filing law, we'll comply with that, and 16 will comply with, which are getting the accurate lot numbers. Now, Mr. Fowler also prepared a memorandum. And I believe you've covered most of the bulk variance relief that's in here and hopefully you've satisfied him as to the crews under a C2. But on his, I guess on page three, he mentioned some general comments. Actually, let me go back, I think on, on page, page two, paragraph two, he's, he's brought out a waiver that's required. And I think. Mr. Key, we certainly can comply with whatever look-alike ordinance is applicable here. And although we've, we have elevations, we certainly are amenable to changing those elevations to make sure that.
Should there be a conflict?
Yes. So we can comply with that.
Just to, just to confirm, so you're saying you're going to comply, you're not going to seek the waiver with regard to that?
I mean, it's, it talks about the fact that two houses can't be dissimilar in character. Maybe Mr. Fowler can give me some clarification. Is it the accessory structure?
Yes, yes, because it's called out as a metal building on the plan, but it's vinyl siding on the, on the architectural detail. So again, maybe that could be dressed up a little bit to fit more with the character of the neighborhood.
We can do that. That's not a problem. No, I think.
No, it said, it had said that on the plan, it's called out as a metal building, but on the architecturals, it's a vinyl siding. It looks more residential on the architectural, but when I read metal building to start with, I thought, oh, that's, that's sort of looked really out of place.
We'll make that consistent, Mike. And what else? Well, I think that also deals with paragraph six. All right, in terms of the general comments, going to the last page, page four. Mr. Key, we'll comply with whatever landscape design standards are required, correct? All right, and Mr. Fowler has brought up a good point regarding the driveway easement. He wants us to see if we can increase the lot depth by at least 10 feet to provide more functional yard area. We can comply with that.
We, we've got plenty of room and yes, it makes sense to add additional tent.
All right, and then paragraphs four, five, and six are just the boilerplate. Yes, we'll seek any outside agencies, we'll comply with the housing requirements. And I think that's really it, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other testimony of my witnesses. Certainly, if anyone has any questions, we'll entertain them.
Anyone from the board have any questions on this matter? Hearing none, I'll open up the public, make a motion, we open up the public. Second, all in favor? Anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? Anyone like to speak? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public session. Second, all in favor? Gentlemen, what's your pleasure, ladies?
Motion to approve the application.
With all the variances and?
Correct, with all the stipulations and testimony and.
Do we have a second?
Roll call. Mr. Candell? Mr. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Larmen? Mr. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Velosin? Chairman, aye.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you members of the board.
Thank you all.
All right, let's try to keep it this short next time.
Yeah, it was, it was refreshing to see no one from the public here.
See what you can do about that, huh?
Next on the agenda, all business due business administrative matters, next meeting, September 4th.
Chairman, we have two applications on for your next meeting. You have a minor subdivision and then the application that was carried from this evening, the cold storage warehouses on Journeyman Road, that'll be heard at the September 4th meeting.
Okay. Any other questions?
Open up to the public.
Motion that we open to the public?
Open to the public.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying no public to be heard, we'll take a motion to close. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, we'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Everyone have a good night.
See you September.